With liberty and justice for all. For emergency issues, issues only, is there any school committee members additions to the agenda? Hearing none, is there any public comment regarding items on the agenda? No? All right, no updates, no special things. Our consent items. Is there any consent item that any members would like to look? I'm looking for a motion on the consent items.
Motion to review consent items.
All right, made by Ruby, seconded by Mika. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion approves, three, nothing, nothing. Amy's gonna be late and Jake's gonna be late. Unfinished business, Cold Springs School closure?
So I just, I started the listening sessions with staff. I am meeting with Swift River in the coming weeks. I just met with Colts Ranks a week and a half ago. Then I'll meet with Javish Brook and Chestnut for sixth grade, and then I will go back to having the parents and community listening session. So that, we're on track with the timeline proposal that I presented on the closure of Cold Springs.
Excellent, I appreciate that you're doing that, and I'll teach you.
Can I ask you a quick question?
Yep.
Is there anything, like what was kind of the general feeling?
Just from Cold Springs was more of like logistics of classrooms. Where were they going to be located? Were they going to be located together? Right now, Swift River has an A side and C side. So we talked about that, how pre-KK would be on one side, one and two would be on the other side. They asked about the playground, where would the playground go? Up at Swift River. They asked about reducing a section of kindergarten due to numbers. And they gave some feedback recommendation about packing, packing up their classes.
Okay.
That was a good conversation.
That's great. We get any questions from you? Excellent. Policy manual development.
I just wanted to give everybody an update. We sent the signed contract to Tracy Novak at MASC, and she'll be working with Heather. Heather has already sent all the information over to her, so she will be at our P and P meetings to go over policies each time we meet.
That's great. All right, NCAS update.
That is Ben.
Ben, if you could sit at that table, and that microphone's already on.
All right. Are we projecting? Ben, they have it, so you can, I'll get it on screen soon.
Sounds good. All right, there's nothing interesting on the first few slides anyhow.
Nicole, do you guys want one? Look at it.
First slide title stuff, second slide and what we're gonna talk about. So, slide three, NCAS results. We're gonna look at two different measures, achievement measures. This is the percentage of students meeting or exceeding expectations. It tells us how many of our students are performing at or above grade level. And then growth measures. The average student growth percentile, or SGP, tells us whether students show more or less improvement since the prior NCAS assessment compared to similar student statewide. So essentially, achievement tells us what our students can do. Growth tells us how we did as a district in education over the past year. We're gonna start with civics. This was the first year that the state administered the civics test statewide. So what happened statewide? In grade eight, which is the only grade in which it's administered, 39% of Massachusetts students met or exceeded expectations. Teachers had less experience teaching science aid. I think they're on a new textbook this year. So that's all sort of in flux. Onward to, the next slide is gonna show the details here. And I'll just walk you through what you're seeing, because we're gonna see it for math and, I thought we were gonna see it for math in ELA as well. The upper part shows the percentage of our students that met or exceeded expectations. Green means we were above the state level, red means we were below. And then that bottom part shows the difference between us and the state. You see the sense of the scope of that difference, the magnitude of that difference. So for example, in grade five in 2025, half of our students met or exceeded expectations, 50%, and that is four percentage points higher than the state. You can see on the lower chart that there's a four, so the state is at 46%, we were at In 2019, if you look at the far left, we underperformed the state in grades five and eight, but now if you combine those two grades, we tie the state in terms of achievement. Grade 10 results, if you look all along that bottom row, they changed the test, so we don't have 2019 and 2021 results, but it's a remarkable achievement. That's our biology program in high school. The only thing that makes it seem unremarkable is that the high school does this again and again, year after year. That final row, lowest on the page, shows you the point difference with the state. And it is really amazing to see 20-point differences from our students' peers statewide. I think that's especially important because so many of our graduates go into healthcare and life sciences, so I think that sets them up well. Have 257 districts taking the grade 10 biology test, Belchtown tied for number 33. Onward to math. So statewide, in grades three through eight, the percentage of students meeting or exceeding expectations didn't change, it stayed at 41%. And in grade 10, the percentage of students meeting or exceeding expectations fell by three percentage points from 48 to 50. Again, it's that grade 10 phenomenon that the DESI is working to understand. In Belchertown, in grades three through eight, the percentage of students meeting or exceeding expectations fell by 1 point. In grade 10, the percentage of students meeting or exceeding expectations rose by 10 points from 46% to 56%. That's a very sharp increase, and it seems especially sharp in a year where statewide scores came down from Massachusetts 10th graders. On the next page again, you get all the details. Pre-pandemic, you can see from the red in 2019, we were behind in most grade levels. That's still true in 2025, that hasn't changed. Post-pandemic, grade three through eight math scores have gradually increased statewide. In Belchertown, they've been stagnant, or they're behind a little bit, and this is why the score gap between Belchertown and the state continues to widen. You can see that, I also like to look at the grade three through eight levels, since it averages several of those. So the second line from the bottom, you can see that gap between us and the state has increased in the last few years. I like, there's a little detail hidden in here. Obviously, grade 10 is the only grade at which we outperform the state mathematics, but that score that they got, our 10th graders, is especially impressive when you read this chart on the diagonal. If you look at them two years ago, in 2023, when they were eighth graders, you'll see that only 22% of them met or exceeded expectations. Far below the state. That's the lowest number I think you're gonna see in that top graph, 22% meeting and exceeding. It is really remarkable that in just those two years, they showed enough progress that they're now at 56% meeting or exceeding expectations. And that's 11 points higher than the state. Again, that's not to, you know, overlook the fact that we have some work to do in grades three through eight, but grade 10, those are really positive developments. And in math, we also have growth percentiles. So again, growth measures, the student growth percentiles, are our best indicator of our own success in promoting learning. And I think there's some good news embedded in this chart as well. In the, in 2024, 25, so last year, we implemented a new math series in grades K through five, something called iReady. Achievement rose in grade three, which was on the previous slide, and on this slide you can see that growth rose in grades four and five. It gives us an early indication that this curriculum change may be successful in driving the improvement we wanna see. It's not, the data's not shadowing this with bullet marks, but the signals are there that this is probably, probably going to help in that situation. So that was good to see, that's something we were specifically looking for, to validate our decision to shift from my math to iReady. Grade 10 has always shown growth above 50, but for the first time since the pandemic, they pushed the growth measures above 60. 60 is sort of a cutoff. Anything between 40 and 50, at 40 and 60, the DESI considered moderate growth. Anything 60 or above is high growth, so it is good to see them performing as they did before the pandemic in terms of growth. 65 for a student growth percentile puts them solidly in the high-growth category. Onward to English. So what happened statewide? Grades three through eight, the percentage of students meeting or exceeding expectations rose by three points, from 39% to 42%. And then in grade 10, the percentage of students, again statewide, the percentage that met or exceeded expectations fell by six points, from 57% to 51%. Of the three different subjects, this was the largest point decline, six points, six point decline since the prior year, Massachusetts. The essay counts for a lot of points on all of the ELA tests. DESI noted that there were three times as many of those off-topic essays in 2024, but again, they're not claiming that as the sole reason for the decline. I will be curious if they follow up with districts and circle back to that and let us know what they figure. As of the last announcement today, we're looking into things. So, English language charts in Belchertown. In grades three through eight, the percentage of students meeting or exceeding expectations rose by three points, which is the same as the state, a three-point increase. And in grade 10, the percentage of students meeting or exceeding fell by four points, from 70% to 60%, 66%. So our gain in grades three through five was the same as the state, a three-point gain, and our loss in grade 10 was less than the state. Statewide, students lost six points, we lost four points. And, you're probably all aware, but I'm not gonna mention it anyhow, at the end of September, Belchertown was honored as one of only 22 districts whose ELA scores in grades three through eight are now higher than they were in 2019. I found it interesting that 54 districts were recognized for the same thing in math, whereas only 22 districts were recognized for that achievement in ELA. I guess I would've thought ELA scores would recover faster than math, but that doesn't seem to be the case, at least by this metric. If you look forward to the details of our scores, I love this slide, there's a really amazing turnaround story here. If you look at 2019, that left-hand column, almost everything is in the red. We were below the state average in six out of the seven grades that we tested, and we weren't just behind, we were behind by a lot. You can see that if you look at the lower chart. Third grade, we lagged the state by 12 points, fourth grade 12 points, fifth grade 18 points. So by 2025, you can see, all but one of our grades is in the green, we're outperforming the state in almost every grade. Even though scores have come up quite a lot, and we now compare very favorably with state averages, we did notice some trends. Despite these solid scores, our students in grades three, four, and five scored below the state average on the essay portion of their test. This flips around in grade six, seven, and eight, where they scored way, way higher than other Massachusetts students, but it helps explain our new writing initiative, which is aimed at driving future success. Half results have shown that when our students can write effectively, they excel in all aspects of language, and if our district-wide writing initiative is successful, I think there's real potential that we'll see even hotter scores in the future. Again, despite all that green in the right-hand column, those students in grades three, four, and five still lagging the state a little bit on their essays, but we're looking forward to better things in the future with the state, that's our district-wide writing initiative. Onward to growth. Growth is in the moderate range, 40 through 60, except in grade six, where it was well into the high-growth range. And this contrasts very nicely with 2019, when we had several grade levels in that low-growth range, that's, we don't wanna be there. We had a couple of grades four and five that were below 40. Now we have no grade levels where growth was below 40, and the majority of them are at or above 50. So we also look at other things. These are the charts, you can look that up online, but we also look at subgroups in different populations, I'm gonna look at a few over here, based on our 2024 scores, not the 2025 that we're mostly talking about tonight, the 2024. The Department of Education identified students with disabilities as a particular area of concern for Belchertown. In the coming weeks and months, we're gonna be looking for root causes and creating a plan to drive improvement in this area. And the following slide, we're gonna show you the percentage of students, students on IEPs in grades three through eight who are meeting or exceeding expectations. Dark blue lines are our students with disabilities, those who are on IEPs. Light blue lines represent students without disabilities. So here we have ELA. Again, the determination by the DESI was made based on 2024 data, that's what they had when they started looking at this. You can see in that year, only 8% of our students with disabilities met or exceeded expectations. That has come up in 2025, which is good to see, it's at now 14%. But that doesn't change the fact that this determination was made. We're going through the process to examine the causes and see what we can do to drive scores up even more. If you go on to math, 2024, when they made that determination, 9% of our students on IEPs were meeting or exceeding expectations. That came up to 10%, but I think math is something we'll be looking at very carefully, not just for this population, but for the district as a whole. Science, the percentage of students on IEPs who met or exceeded expectations in 2024, when the determination was made, 16%. That's come up to 21%, and it's nice to see that that is the highest it's been since at least 2019. That's as far back as this chart goes. So the, it's sort of an odd thing, in 2025, students with disabilities really did better. But then if you look at that top line, students without disabilities declined quite a bit. That was driven by those grade eight scores, which were uncharacteristically low compared to the same as last year. I've added, literally, it was me out of your packets, I've added three slides to show our students on IEPs versus statewide students on IEPs. I had a request to sort of put this in context by showing some of the state scores. So the following slide, we're gonna show you the percentage of Belchertown students in grades three through eight who are meeting or exceeding expectations compared to the percentage statewide. And again, these are all students on IEPs. Dark blue line is Belchertown, Belchertown students with disabilities. The orange lines are Massachusetts students with disabilities. Go ahead, right, so this is ELA. Again, you can see, we looked at this a couple, a few slides ago, 2024, only 8% of our students on IEPs were meeting or exceeding expectations. That's come up to 14%. In 2025, that was higher than the state. The orange line is the state. Statewide, 12% of students with disabilities met or exceeded expectations in grades three through eight. In Belchertown, that was 14%. In math, same chart, here we see that since the prior year, we've shown a little bit of progress, but not enough to catch up with the state, where 13% of our students with disabilities met or exceeded expectations. And in the science, in science, our students with disabilities outperformed their peers statewide in almost every year, not in 2019, but ever since then. Unfortunately, in making these determinations, for some reason, the Department of Education doesn't look at science, so bad luck for us, but I think those students are really shining in science. Accountability percentiles, this is, these are measures that the DESI applies to us. They compare us to Massachusetts schools serving similar grade ranges. They factor in NCAS achievement, NCAS growth, progress towards English learner proficiency, chronic absenteeism, and then for high schools, they also factor in high school completion and advanced coursework. So between 2019 and 2025, I think we see some really nice improvement at Chestnut Hill and Javish Brook, and Belchertown High School has retained its status as a high-performing school, so I think this is good news since 2019, looking back. Chestnut Hill 32, percentile score 32 to 60, Javish Brook 24 to 41, solid improvement in both of those cases, and the high school has been solid all along, 72 to 69. There's another accountability measure that the state uses called progress towards targets. This is where they evaluate our progress towards improvement targets, which typically involve closing gaps between different demographics groups. These are groups based on income, disability status, English language learner status, race, ethnicity. And I want to make clear, this is not a percentile. It is a 0 to 100 measure of our success in meeting these very specific goals set for our DESI. So they literally go to every district and they say, oh, here's your goal for 2025, here's your goal for 2026, we want these two groups to show more similar results, so if there's not, we don't see those gaps. Here you can see the measures sort of fluctuate year to year. Each measure is based on two years, actually based on two years of data. So our 2025 measures are partially based on what we did in 2025, and partially based on 2024, and that's to kind of even out these scores. If you looked at individual scores, we actually have like, Swift River, you can see they got 100 in 2023, which is great, but next year I think they got 5%. So the DESI's looking at multiple years to kind of even that out, because otherwise the scores change quite a bit. It can be hard to meet DESI's gap closing targets. They, so our overall district score is 44, and they characterize that as making moderate progress towards targets. So they have different categories, and at 40, the district-wide score of 44, we are making moderate progress towards meeting those gap closing targets. I added a slide on chronic absenteeism, it's something that I think we all think a lot about coming out of pandemic. Statewide, 18.8% of students were chronically absent. And chronically absent means 10% of days or more, so in a school year with 180 days, if you miss 18 days, you're chronically absent. So statewide, 18.8% of students were chronically absent. In Belchertown, only 15.2% were chronically absent. However, as we're gonna see on the next slide, the really big improvements we saw here in Belchertown and statewide have slowed down. 2023, 2024, as things got back to normal, we saw major improvement in chronic absenteeism, with fewer and fewer students chronically absent. That has slowed in the last year. That mirrors what's going on statewide. And just as, another note, it was an interesting statistic that the DESI put out, you know, missing 18 days of school, you know, warrants this chronically, chronic absenteeism label. However, statewide, the average chronically absent student actually missed 30 days, a little over 30 days. So that doesn't mean that they missed 18 days, in some cases they missed quite a long time. And the reason we look at this, one of the reasons, is that statewide data shows very clearly that chronic absent students are much less likely to meet or exceed expectations on the NCAS. In all sorts of measures, high school graduation, all kinds of things, students who aren't in school predictably don't do as well as those who are in school. I chose a couple of populations here, not because they are, you know, responsible or driving our chronic absenteeism. I chose them to sort of indicate the kinds of things we're looking at and the kinds of conversations we're having. So this slide, it's from a DESI data system. I would really recommend ignoring the 2020 and 2021 figures. I don't have a lot of faith that statewide attendance measures were very meaningful in years when we were remote or even hybrid. But setting those aside, the dark blue line represents all chronic absenteeism among all of our students, and you can see it spiked in 2022, and then it's come down, came down very sharply in 2023, very sharply in 2024, that was good to see, and it's sort of leveling off. This is similar to what's going on statewide, and unfortunately, it's leveling off a level that's higher than pre-pandemic. This is something that I think at the state level, they're very concerned about, and there's a lot of talk about how we can keep driving improvements in attendance. The other lines show chronic absenteeism for two specific populations, English learners are in light blue, and students with disabilities are in a range. Again, these are just examples of the sorts of things we look at and talk about, not as some sort of explanation for overall trends. It's, you know, what we're seeing there is for our English language learners, chronic absenteeism is higher than for English language learners statewide, so that's something I think we'll be discussing and thinking about a lot. And then in that orange line, our students with disabilities, chronic absenteeism actually edged up a little bit last year. Again, something that I think in meeting with administrators, we'll be talking about and thinking a lot about. MasCor is a state-recommended program study for high school students. It's intended to align high school coursework with college and workforce expectations. So this is, this is the state's recommended program study. They don't control our graduation requirements, they don't have that right, but they do say, gee, we think, you know, students to be set up for success in life, they should have these things, four years of English, four years of math, they have a full list. They have found that completion of the MasCor requirements increase the likelihood that high school graduates will meet the initial requirements for four-year colleges. They see that this is an important thing for students to do. If you go onto the next slide, the reason I wanted to include this is, if we wait another year to talk about MasCor, I don't usually include it in the NCAS presentation, but this wonderful 2019 progression will fall off the edge of the slide. And I wanted to give a shout-out to the high school, because they brought up the MasCor completion rate from 29% in 2019 to 88.5% in 2024. The 2025 numbers aren't out yet, but I calculated them myself, and it looks like we're gonna be at about 80% again. So what happened here? The high school looked very carefully at MasCor rates many years ago. They carefully identified the areas where our students were falling short of the standard, and then they adjusted the graduation requirements. Some of you may have been on the school committee, you may have voted to adjust the graduation requirements. Because current students were grandfathered in under the old graduation requirements, it really took several years to see the impact of changing those requirements, but as I said, the MasCor completion rate rose from 29% to 88.5%, and we expect it to level off and remain high. So statewide, the MasCor rate was 81% in 2019, far higher than us, and 84% in 2024. So in that time span, we came from far behind the state level to a point where our MasCor completion rate is above the average. So that MasCor graph shows the payoff for a successful initiative. Sometimes it takes years to see good results, but we're seeing the benefits of decisions made years ago. And on this slide, I just highlight a few of the initiatives that we're starting. Our hope is that we're going to see the payoff, hopefully not five years from now, hopefully sooner, but the three initiatives highlighted here. iReady's our new math series, implemented in 2024. Still very early, but as I mentioned, there are some hopeful signs in the 2025 NCAS data, suggesting that this may be more effective than our prior strategies. Second one on the list, we recently launched a district-wide focus on writing, and this is based on years of data telling us that when our students write effectively, they tend to get really good NCAS results. As I said, I'm also hopeful that some of the skills they learn in their writing lessons will address the weakest area in civics, which was reasoning, supporting your argument with evidence. Those are all things that the writing curriculum that we're implementing covers. And then finally, we're just beginning this process, number three on that list, the process of looking at achievement of students with disabilities. We don't yet know where the day will be, or what changes or conditions might come out of that. We're really at square one, and we're gonna be digging into the data to see what it can tell us. We're really at square one, and we're going to be digging into the data to see what it can tell us and what it suggests as far as the way we can improve. I think that's it for the end MASC presentation. Do you have questions?
Yeah. So I'm looking at the initiatives. Do you have any initiatives that are focused on improvements for ELL students?
Let me think. I wouldn't necessarily know of changes in that field. I'm not aware of any, but I do think, one of the interesting things about this process for, that we're starting of looking at data, a couple of weeks ago, several of us went to Springfield for two days of meetings with DESI. Sean was there, Debbie Lynch was there. And it was because they determined that our twenty twenty-four scores on students with disabilities were lower than they wanted to see. One of the things they really stressed was the solution, in many of these cases, when a district did find itself in that situation, doesn't need to be specific to students with disabilities. Their position is, well, find ways to bring up scores for everyone, look at all your populations. So I think as part of this data review and, you know, looking at ways to drive achievement among students with disabilities, I suspect we're going to be looking at English language learners as well and general population as well. So yeah, that's definitely something. Things are changing a little bit when it comes to English language learners. The Department of Education changes criteria for being designated an English language learner. And we're starting to see districts around the state, I didn't assign students who probably shouldn't have been in that category. So for a moment, I want, to put it in context, we had about sixty English language learners, three percent of our students. So things are changing there, and I definitely think that's something that we should look at. The real eye opener for me was chronic absenteeism in this population. That's a group that has higher rates of chronic absenteeism statewide, but our rate was even a little higher than that. And I think it's something to think about and to talk about and to ask, you know, are we doing everything we can to make this district welcoming and comfortable? And do they even want to come to school? Are our instructional practices effective? All those things, things I suspect we'll be talking about around the next.
And we, the last bullet, the work that we're doing, we have an in-district team. We have the team of Ben, Becky and myself, and then we have an in-district team where we're going to start actually doing the work. And that includes the ELL teacher. So we are, we've noticed that and are trying to bring that perspective in as well to see where we can go specifically.
So the short version would be nothing specific, but I think this process may give us a path forward for ELL students to turn. I hope.
Another question. So in the civics assessment, you called out that the weakest area was explanations and reasoning. Is that something that you have the ability to tease out for both the ELA and math exam as well, or?
It is not a standard, an explicit standard on ELA. Each of the subject area tests has its own standards. I'm just becoming familiar with the civics standards, but no, strangely enough, in ELA and math, that's not something that they explicitly measure. You know, I think our eighth grade students generally in the past have done well in ELA. So I would have said, gee, they can probably explain themselves and cite evidence and things. You know, that isn't, isn't what we saw on the civics test. And again, I think sometimes the data rather than answering questions raises new questions. I think it's something that probably the civics teachers will be very curious to see. So they can think, okay, are we, you know, we're teaching them civics facts. We're effective in that, we got above the state average in that. But is there anything we can do to help them put it all together and make sense of this? There's a difference between knowing that there are three branches of government and being able to explain why we chose as a nation to organize ourselves that way and why that's important. So I think they set a higher level of thinking that we want to see improvements there since that was there.
Do we have any other mechanisms to have an understanding of where students are in that realm across the board? I mean, it's something I'm very interested in.
Yeah, no, it's fascinating. Civics, you know, we are, we are getting to the point where we have assessments throughout the year in math and ELA. I think we're doing better on that, and we're focusing on looking at those more consistently to see what they tell us rather than waiting for MCATs at the end. Civics, I, you know, aside from the daily feedback that those teachers get in teaching eighth grade, there's no periodic civics assessment in the course of the year, no sort of early warning system or way to tell how we're doing until the MCAT comes out. Again, I think, I imagine those teachers have plenty of direct feedback from talking to students, from giving assignments. But, but no, to answer your question, I don't even know if there are any commercially available civics assessments like that.
Yeah, actually, I didn't mean specifically for civics. I meant like any ability to evaluate sort of our students' ability to
Okay.
meet that explanations and higher reasonings metric in other subject areas.
So the closest thing I think would be again, part of the new writing initiative, where we're going to be focusing on developing common root brackets and a shared understanding what constitutes high quality work. And of course, when you're talking about writing, things like citing evidence and putting it all together and explaining yourself become important. So that's the closest thing I think of, as far as those cognitive skills of explaining yourself, citing evidence and stuff. I know that is a big part of SSDR, which is the writing program that we're, the teachers district-wide are training on. It goes so far as to have students write an essay, and then they take highlighters, they color code it, okay? And then it goes in blue, topic sentences go in yellow. It helps them see how our business works together. And again, I think that's, that's going to be positive for the district. I would like to think it will also drive some improvement on that, that specific civics standard. But that's a footnote here.
Thank you.
I don't believe that these results, student-level results will be released by the state. So we won't know what the students actually wrote in these areas on the civics test. So we're kind of going blind.
Right.
So there were no exemplars, there were no, I think to say, here's what your answer should look like. So we may have just not been quite prepared.
Right, right, right.
We weren't sure what we were going for.
Right.
Yeah.
So some more information we learn about the assessment, about what they're looking for, ideally we continue to get better.
With the more mature tests, the English, the science, the math, every year they retire a certain number of questions, and then they release them to us and say, oh, well, this was the question, and here's the right answer. Here's where they all went wrong. Civics are so good, they're not giving anything away.
Right.
They don't want to retire any of those questions that they worked so hard to make. But, you know, I think that day will come.
Yeah.
So I think over time, we have noticed a trend that we're losing a lot of points in the writing, the open response. So hence, one of the reasons we started the SRSD. But I was kind of thinking the correlation between what you were asking with the writing, because they're not doing very well in explaining or citing their evidence or providing logic. So I was curious to see if that connection will help, but
It makes sense.
I'm not sure if that answers the
Yeah, no, no, it does, yeah. Thank you. Other questions? So I appreciate you offered up these questions in the beginning and following them. Ben's answered a lot of them, so I'm not going to make him go up.
I'm going to miss any because I tried to work on it.
Really? Really? No, no, no.
You know, one or two of the questions were about where our performance is low. Is it on specific standards or is it specific subgroups? And just as a general response, with the exception of a few areas like writing, we, in certain grade levels, it frustrates me to look at the curriculum analysis on these tests, which tells you what are you doing well and what are you doing poorly. And it rarely points to one specific area. And especially frustrates me in math, because they take these tests, they break them down into, you know, twenty-two different skill areas. And year to year, the numbers bounce around. The dream is that you look at this report and it says, ah, you know, everybody in this district did poorly on that. They maybe need more geometry practice or something. Practice, that hasn't proven to be the case. And that's, it makes it harder to target specific skills, especially in math. English is a little different. We've known for some years that writing is the weak point. Math is just tougher, you know, grade eight. I did have you on one particular question about the volume of a cylinder, but like a general year to year, it fluctuates so much that it's hard to point at a scale and say, gee, we always throw that, our students always throw that. So I did want to mention that, and I think I liked that on the presentation, but in terms of isolating weak areas to specific standards, sometimes we can get some of that, especially, you know, if they're writing, but math, it's, it just didn't, it doesn't seem to work that way.
It's consistent though across the board.
Exactly, that's, that's right.
It's not that we, I mean, ideally, we can even use it in reverse and to highlight areas of liberty really well. But we are, like you can see from the charts in the earlier slides, like we're, we're low and we're, we're growing and we're working. But even good growth this year is still low, still behind the state. So we're, we're going in the right direction.
And we had a lot of concern about the old math series. We weren't very pleased with it. Now we went through the high quality instructional material for the state, for ELA and for math. So now we're on the eye reading. I'm pleased to see that we made those gains in ELA. I'm hoping to continue with that with the SRSD. But I do want to share too, that at the beginning of the year, myself and all the administrative principals, building principals, went to the learning expectations, you know, we're going to develop a plan. And some of that that we brought back was high expectations in all classrooms. What is that going to look like? In grade level material, I think we, we have spent too much time saying students aren't ready for this. Let's lower the expectation and let's use a curriculum resource that is a grade below. And we need to stop doing that, and we need to use the appropriate curriculum and scaffold to get them to where they want to be. So we'll have more information on that because we went to the workshop this year. But I think a lot of that, hopefully, will start to come together, and we will continue to see these trends.
And it's counterintuitive, but it's possible to get into the cycle of perpetual remediation, where you never hit a grade level. Because you're saying, ah, well, we have some students who are still behind. That's the, so that's, that's going to be a challenge to address. But I think that's exactly what is a big part of what's going on.
So I did, I poured over these over the weekend, and I did have a bunch of questions to send to Heidi, but I do have a few follow-up ones. Before I start, thank you, this is a ton of work. We can do it at our schools. Appreciate all the stuff that goes into making this. And I want to start with like, MCATs are not end-all, be-all. They can hijack an entire curriculum. I don't think it should drive every single decision, but I do think MCATs can be a canary in a coalmine. I think it's important that, and I don't want this to come across as a criticism of teachers or administrators. I think we have been in a district that, as much as I'm really glad we seem to be all driving in the same direction, leading up to last year, there was not always a feeling of schools are prioritized. And there's turnover, and there's cuts, and those have impacts. So I wanted to just point out, there's a bunch of red numbers here that if you didn't choose twenty nineteen, correct me if I'm wrong.
Yeah.
But if you didn't choose twenty nineteen, if you chose twenty fifteen, those would say above the state by twenty points, not behind the state by eighteen, seventeen, or four.
And the choice of twenty nineteen, I want to make clear, it's not sort of cherry picking a year. The state is going back to twenty nineteen. I don't, I think there's too much emphasis on twenty nineteen. It's just some evening that we inhabited before the pandemic. If you go back further, there were some really remarkable years. I feel like the wine concert, twenty twelve. Twenty twelve. Just get back to twenty twelve.
I mean, when you look at twenty twelve, if you look at those three, four, or five years in Belchtown, this place was the highest performing with the lowest property taxes. Like this was the money bundle of districts. And I wonder, in looking at this data, and I'm going to just take what I've experienced in the three districts I've worked in. Often we peel it apart by school, and different leaders, it could be a principal, it could be administration at central office. They come in and they say, here's what we're doing for this school, because when you do the drill down in ELA, this was the standard. This was the subgroup struggling at this school. But at the elementary school, it's actually this standard, it's this subgroup. And I'm wondering if that's part of the process here, if it's something we should consider doing.
I just have a follow-up question. So how different has the test been over the course of those years?
They, you know, I had a slide a couple of years ago that showed the history of testing. They went from legacy MCATs, we now call it, to MCATs two point oh. Park, we're in two years with a test called Park. Yeah. But to my mind, the student growth percentile has kind of eaten all that out. The methodology there has been consistent. It compares us with other districts in the state. So I can't honestly attribute the changes in twenty fifteen and twenty twelve to changes in the task. I feel like they represent an actual phenomenon. I do look at those years, I mean, there are a couple of ways you can take that, the fact that we had some very good years in that era. To me, it's cause for hope. I look at those numbers, and I was here for those years. And I know that our students are capable of doing amazing things. We have many of the same teachers we did back then. Fortunately, we have a low teacher churn rate, or it used to be very low, it's still, still reasonably low. Our students can accomplish amazing things, our teachers can accomplish amazing things. I think the question is how do we get back to the kind of district that I was in? I can't remember whether I've said this in past presentations, but I came to this district, so I took this job and moved to this town because of this. I looked at the data before I took this job, and I was interviewing for a number of jobs in different places. I sat at the computer and took part in workshops, I do. And I told my wife, I said, look, there's this, there's this district. And it's like the little engine, good, that they have the best resources, they're most, and they're getting these amazing results. And I think that's the kind of place that I love spending my career. So Belchtown has the potential to achieve at that level again. Some of the things that I'm excited about, this writing initiative, is a district-wide initiative. I don't feel like we've done those for somehow. And I think that was one of the things that drove our successes in early division teams. I think with the pandemic, we've been struggling to stay focused, and with resource issues that make everything more difficult. But I'm really excited that we're talking about writing district-wide. And we're talking about what else we can do to drive success. I feel like there's a different feel. We'll see where it goes, but absolutely, if we started these charts five years earlier, it'd look quite different.
I think that, one of the points I heard, and it was a little hard to hear it sometime, so I may be misquoting you. But one of the things that I wanted to point out was, yes, the high school is really improving the scores. But the thing that I was thinking was, imagine if they were being handed kids that were above the state average to begin with. Like a teacher can only take a kid from X to Y. There's only going to be so many points that they can push in a hundred and eighty school days. And so where you get a kid is where you need to begin. And so that's something that I think about when I look at the scores from some of the sending schools. It's like, yes, the high school is really pulling these kids up, but what are we doing at some of these other schools to address what we're seeing? And most of my questions were essentially, what is the drill down showing? And what are we going to do at these three schools where I see these particular issues where we're below the state average? Because if we're below the state average, everyone's dealing with COVID, everyone's dealing with low income, everyone's dealing with funding crops. I don't think Belchtown's a below average place. And I don't think anyone here wants it to be. And so what I'm wondering is, what are we doing to push it up in the different schools that we have? And so I guess I could get specific, but it may be just more important to say, can And so I guess I could get specific, but it may be just more important to say, can we get those answers at a different later meeting? Like what's going to happen at this school for that one that's below 20 points? What's going to happen here? And that's what I'm accustomed to hearing is, I know IXL is happening K through five.
I read.
I read this. So that's happening K through five, I get that. There's some others that haven't been addressed and I don't want to point out because I don't want to send the wrong message. Because I'm sure something's being done, but it would be reassuring to hear what is being done.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. It, you know. I think those are good questions there, exactly the questions. IREDDI has shown some signs that we don't really do, you know, assess. There's no MCAS in K through two, but I was pleased to see some positive signs in grades three, four, five. We use a different math series in grades six, seven. We use something called Desmos Math. And there, I think we need to kind of unpack the mystery of why that seems to be driving good growth in grade six. Where the student growth percentile is 60, but less so than grade seven and eight. I'll also point out, you know, we use that math series in grades six, seven and eight. And that's what we're talking about when we talk about reorganizing the district. More and more of these curriculum products are structured differently than we are. They're assuming that you were in grades six, seven, eight or altogether in middle school. I think maybe including those teachers together is a plus to the organization. It's not the main thing, it's not going to work magic. But yeah, I agree. And I also like the point about the high school seems to be a good result as they push things forward. I was speaking with a teacher not just a few days ago, who has traditionally had great success in driving growth among her students. And I said, well, you know, your students tend to do very well, but just imagine if they came into your class above an average, if they already had those skills, what could you achieve if they reached your level and they were already ahead? And I think that's what we're shooting for. So school specific, school specific solutions exist.
Because I want to create an opportunity for people in town to hear, this is what we could be doing if we had X and it would have this impact.
I think Ben told two stories that speak to that. And one is on the screen, the ELA turnaround. This is potentially a result of comprehensive alignment, high expectations focus, everybody going in the same direction. You mentioned the perpetual remediation sort of spun around. Like we saw when our state curriculum was out of alignment and our practices were changing to try to adjust for materials, that students were being set up to be behind year over year. Because they just weren't hitting everything we needed to hit. We weren't building a solid foundation. We see in 2021 with year one of implementation of K5 aligned, high rigor materials. It took some time, but we're seeing now green almost completely down the line. This is year one of math and writing. We saw the other, with 2019, we switched to math score, raised expectations at the high school. And now we're seeing it go up.
You see a drop.
And we're seeing it go up. So I think that we aren't quite at a place where we're able to say, here's the individual solution to the problem. We're looking at solving the problem for everyone raises, achievement for everyone. And so we're really from like, I think we might be there for ELA. We're going to look at math, or I'm sorry, look at writing more specifically. But we need to do some global readjustments of math, raise expectations for everybody. Move us in a couple of years to a column of green and then say, all right, now what can we specifically focus on to make that continued improvement?
Are there, is there any specific grade level where we consistently get higher numbers of school choice students?
No, I've never looked at that. I don't believe we have a major school choice bubble in a particular grade level. In fact, we've tended to open seats broadly across a number of areas. I will tell you that a few years back, I stepped up into school choice data fairly intensively. I was curious to learn, based on some things people had said, whether our school choice students look different from Belchtown students. You know, everybody has anecdotal evidence, they know this student, they know that student. But I wondered whether the data would support some of the things I was hearing. And I, what I found was that the school choice students look remarkably like our home students. And here's what I learned. After their first year, there's always an adjustment here when you move between districts. The DESI has talked about this. They factor it into their early warning systems and things for students. After that first year, their MCAS scores look like Belchtown students' MCAS scores. Their grade point averages look like Belchtown students' grade point averages. Their attendance is very similar to Belchtown students'. They're coming from further, things like this, with every metric I could look at. Because I did wonder if that population is significantly different. Could not find, I really looked. I could not find a way in which they were substantially different or different at all. It was, I think, reassuring to me to see that these students, they're here for a year and really are be disimbushable for our own students. So I don't, I don't have school choice, you know, I can actually, just visualizing the school choice spreadsheets, I think they all have roughly the same number of students on. I don't think we have a particular grade level that has where you would have been wondering about the grade level. I don't know if that answers your question, it's not a problem at all.
Yes.
Okay.
Coming into this role, one of my biggest concerns is just kids' social emotional wellbeing. I think if we look at any data set, it gives a more impression than just what they've ever been. And you can't learn if you're thinking about something else. It doesn't matter if it's math science or ELA. I was hoping to see the local data, which is one little snapshot of kind of how kids in eighth and 10th grade are doing. Do you have any sense of what those scores look like compared to the state average, are we above or below?
You know, I just.
School based, does it vary?
Variable. I looked at them today briefly. It's a, it's a, I love vocal data. It is a little tricky.
You love vocal data.
I don't like to play favorite, but vocal, vocal. MCAS vocal, I love them. I'm not going to. The vocal data is a little tricky. I like it and I think it has a lot to tell us. I do think after years of looking at it, that the aggregate numbers aren't as useful as I would like them to be. What I mean by that is vocal data, this is views of climate learning that students take in grades four, five, eight and 10 after the MCAS. It's a computerized assessment, ask them what they think about school and then much more. I think the aggregate numbers are less meaningful than like, it looks at things like safety, there's an aggregate number for, say there's an aggregate number for feelings of depression. And, you know, at least in the early years, I got outside and I was like, oh, wow, we'd find a measure of these things. And then some of what I saw, some of what I learned made me think, you know, those metrics nationwide are very much related to things like demographics. So district to district and state to state, depending on whether the students you serve are low income or not low income or from different racial or ethnic groups, you see very different results. And I haven't, I need to look at this year's more carefully, but I got excited when vocal was released because I thought, oh, here's some trends we need to think about and talk about based on those aggregate scores. And then as I learned more about these measures, it turned out some of them were more about demographics of Belchtown than meaningful data on our students. And having said that, there's a lot we can learn from vocal. I think if you look at the statewide vocal data, it provides really interesting insights into what different groups of students, how they feel about school in general. So students with disabilities, are they feeling like safe at school or are they safe in students with disabilities? There's all kinds of questions you can answer from that by looking at the state data because it's a more state effect. And you can look at Belchtown's data and say, where are we different from the state? There are a lot of different questions on this and I find that very interesting. I always want to know if we're out of sync with the rest of the city and if there's something unique going on here. And then the last thing I think about the vocal data is that I really like all of one of the questions they ask. They're useful questions, they're things that even just reading the questions, we can ask ourselves, oh, is that true of my, you know, is that true of our district, is that true of in my classroom? So we add my numbers, early in the vocal rollout, in the first couple of years, we were generally close to the state. I think this year, we're lower. So I don't say, I'm not saying these are meaningless because we're lower. If they're lower, they're lower. But I, I'm not always convinced that that tells us as much about our students as I, as I would like it to speak.
So is that data we can get?
The state level data is public and it's available online. The Belchtown data is a little tougher. They used to have these great reports and they took them away and made a dashboard, visualization dashboard. I can see if I can, I can pull that.
I mean, just something similar to this would be impressive.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, no. It's something that I think you should see, I think everybody should see and I think we should be talking about it. As of last year, it was hard to pull out of their system, but I'll find something to do.
Because I mean, eighth grade science isn't great, but you know, we hear bad news and.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Vocal is wonderful, vocal is something that we should, we should be talking about. It.
It tells us that kids feel like they're being bullied, it tells us.
Yeah.
Yes, absolutely.
No, so I think. Somehow we've got to get something, so yeah.
And that's, you know, I didn't put it together, this is mostly MCAS, but I think it's something that we should, we should be presenting. Again, the adjusted, I don't want to give any spoilers, I do think the numbers are lower than state this year.
And that may be, and I want to be clear, it's not a criticism of staff. It's really where it helps figure out needs and it helps us raise awareness about needs.
You know, and I'll be more specific about the moment in which I thought, oh, boy, that may not be as useful. I thought it was a two or three years into vocal. And I'm looking at the scores and, you know, and I saw, oh, boy, oh, we rate high on safety, but kind of low on engagement, which should have surprised me. And I did a lot of thinking about that and everything. And I started taking other state, taking apart the state numbers and saw that there were some sizable demographic differences. So white students tend to feel very safe at school. That is more to do sometimes with their demographic group than the district itself. Non-white students, all the other groups rank higher in engagement, which is an interesting thing. And I think not enough people know this. So when we were high on safety, low on engagement, I felt like, oh, well, maybe that reflects more the makeup of our student body than things we're doing. There's still good stuff to get out of there. It's those aggregate scores that I'm sometimes a little skeptical about. But like I said, there's a lot to learn from vocal. And I love the fact that some of what you learn from vocal turns preconceived notions on its head. You know, when you look at questions about engagement, like when I come to school, the things I learn in school are important to my future success. Or when I go home, I want to keep learning about the same things. That's, it is interesting how different groups feel about those things.
So I'm going to kind of stop you because I need to look at it to.
Yeah, yeah, it's not going to make a little less sense.
So that would be great if we could, I want to have this conversation just when we have the information.
I will find a way to pull it out. They don't make it easy for me, but I'll get something to you, okay?
Anything else? Okay. Anything from you guys? All right.
Thanks, Ben.
There's nothing to get.
I'm going to turn it over to the student who's going to be. Well, I'll tell you, the enrollment numbers look more like our math scores than our ELA scores.
It's not that, I'm just trying to focus.
If you can pull up the. So I'm going to review a little bit. Our system of projecting future enrollment is based on extrapolating past trends. And at state times, this has proven really accurate. I'm very proud of this system, until now, this year when I worked. So this year, however, our actual enrollment proved to be well below the projection reported past, run last April. At that time, we projected 2025, 26 enrollment of 2,023 students, which was a decline of 20 students since last October. In reality, we now expect 2025, 26 enrollment to be about 1,966 students, which is a decline of 77. We looked into this, it's largely due to changes in school choice and the lower pre-K enrollment. I'll go into that in some detail. So fewer school choice students, and this was a major factor. School choice enrollment had increased sharply in recent years. We were seeking revenue to fill budget gaps and we opened more seats. The way this projection works is it looks at trends. So we have several years of growing school choice enrollment and the algorithm says, ah, we're going to keep going. We're going to, you know, we're going to get more school choice students. That's going to drive an increase. Instead of increasing, school choice fell by 18 students. It's the largest year over year decline since the DESI began keeping statistics for Belchtown in 1996. And what this did threw things off in two ways. One, the projection was looking for an increase, you know, of around 18. Instead of that increase, we had a decrease of 18, so the gap there ends up being 36 students based on school choice. What happened was we opened fewer seats and we made decisions later than usual because we were waiting for the override vote. These are all normal things. It meant fewer seats opened and then a smaller percentage of those seats ended up being filled. And we could still fill a few seats before the end of the year. So when you look at this and you see the fill rate of 31%, that's not a perfect comparison with past years. Those past years, the fill rates are 43%, 78%, 87%. Those are full year, you know, we could still get a few students. But the big driver in this has been the fewer school choice students. There is another factor and it is lower pre-K and K enrollment than I expected. Pre-K, we anticipated 65 students, which was just a, you know, pre-K and K is kind of guesswork. That anticipated the same numbers as the prior year. We actually enrolled 55, that's our smallest pre-K class since 2122. In kindergarten, we anticipated 125 students, but we actually enrolled 116. That's our smallest kindergarten class on record. And kindergarten is especially important because we continue to graduate larger classes of 12th graders and enroll smaller classes of kindergartens. That's one of the areas in which we, that's the way our enrollment tends to decline. You know, why is the kindergarten enrollment lower? We had four kindergarten enrollments at Pioneer Valley and Chinese immersion. It's a little more than usual, but overall, the Pioneer Valley Chinese immersion charter school enrollment didn't change much. Anecdotally, there were a small number of enrollments that are private kindergarten program. In pre-K, I did some asking, we actually had a waitlist for our afternoon session, which is the older pre-K students. But the morning session is just a little bit over half full. We're having to fill in those seats, that's the sessions for the younger students. And then, you know, from what I'm hearing, in pre-K, that half day schedule and the lack of transportation is making it harder to attract those role model students that fill the extra seats. Of course, the nature of the pre-K program is that it is there to serve students with disabilities. We have students with disabilities and then role model students alongside them. And we take any student who qualifies based on their disability status. But those role model seats for the younger kids are proving harder to fill. So pre-K went down from 65 to 55, kindergarten went down from 25 to 116.
Is that the current number of 55?
That was as of last week.
Okay, so we got two new pre-K students starting. So that number can fluctuate right now and the end of the year.
Yes, and for, just for the record, the numbers I'm citing. Yes, and for, just for the record, the, the numbers I'm citing are October numbers every year. We want to compare this October versus last year, because we do get more pre-K students as the year goes on.
I just want to say something, I'm sounding very down about this, that I just get a negative feeling.
No, no, no.
Enclosing a building, I think that it's okay that we're down.
Yes, oh, yeah, yeah, no, this is, this is not. And, and again, I don't want to spoil everything, but on the last slide, I'm gonna say something clever about how it reduces the space pressure as we reorganize into a fourth school district. This is a bad news. It's, I think we too often believe the figure is better, and especially given how chapter seventy financing works, we don't actually get more money for having, having more students. This, this takes off some of the pressure. So, agreed, I, if I'm sounding down, it's because I backtested this production method for years. Solid until you get a broken.
All right, we can start off, we messed it up with not accepting children's school choice. You can put the points on.
That was, I was gonna be more subtle, but, okay.
We take that one, we, we accept it completely.
Then my job here is done, we can, we can call it quits. I did, this is an odd slide, factors that did not decrease enrollment. And I took this in because when I saw that our enrollment came in lower than what I expected, it made me worry. You know, we've come through a period where we've been debating all kinds of things related to the school, school finance. A lot of information came out over the, over the spring, things that were new to me, things that surprised me, things that had to do with per pupil expenditures in Belchtown. Things that had to do with some repairs needing in our building. So, when I saw the decline, I thought, oh, my gosh, I hope, I hope people didn't take away the message that this, this isn't a good school district and they're choosing other options. So, what this slide is doing is talking about some of the things I looked at before reassuring myself that that's, that's not really what's going on. So, the number of students transitioning to homeschooling actually declined slightly over the summer. We're not seeing a mass access to homeschooling, homeschooling has increased over the years, but enrollment in virtual public schools has helped. People aren't fleeing Belchtown from public school, virtual public schools. Enrollment in PVPA, Pioneer Valley Performing Arts, increased a little bit, a little bit of this offset by a decline in the number of town residents flipping out. There are only a couple of resident students attending the new charter school, Old Sturbridge Charter School, Smith's VOCAL is down. Again, this is, you know, it, it may seem not entirely relevant, but I wanted to walk you through the process that I used in, in confirming that this isn't, this doesn't appear to be a case of the community hearing some things last spring. You know, the schools don't have enough money, we need repairs in the building, I don't know if I want my students to, to go here. I don't think that's what's going on, that was a concern. I think it's mainly school choice and then, and the lower K, pre-K. So, next slide, we actually have the projections for next year, that's that last line. What's added to this since the July presentation, 25, 26 line, is those haven't been published, those should be very accurate though. I did work out who won student that was miscoded yesterday, so those are off by a long six, three student, but I think that's where those, those 25, 26 until numbers are gonna fall. And based on that, we have a rough projection of what next year might look like, barring any major changes.
So, now, when you consider next year, what are you, what are you figuring for school choice?
Yeah, well, I, you tell me, I work in the.
But what are these numbers figuring out? Used to be, or was last year?
These numbers use the same system, however, we're not coming off of this constant growth, coming off growth and a fall, a decline. So, you know, these are looking at the, the last few years, which now, because of the declining school choice enrollment, includes some years where it was up and a year where it was down. Whether the, you know, if, if school choice changes, if we expect school choice enrollment to change over that summer, if we expect to change the seats that we're gonna open. That's something that we'd want to sort of intentionally factor in.
Can we see what this looks like from here on out without school choice? I think that's what I'm hearing you saying, is like, what does this look like if school choice isn't as high as it has been? Like, if it was just Belchtown, what would we be, what would we be expecting?
If we, okay, let me, let me.
So, school choice stays like it was last year?
No, I'm, I'm wondering, as we're shrinking schools, and we're getting fewer and fewer pre-K and kindergartners, we're out of choice. Either we backfill with a bunch of school choice, or we readjust our size to how big we currently are townwide. I'm wondering, what would this look like if it was just Belchtown? And then that would inform how many more school choice seats could you have?
Okay, so, would it answer that question if I found a way to generate a similar chart that excluded all school choice?
Because there's gonna be a point where it makes sense to backfill and fill seats so that they're 22, 22, 22, but then, there's gonna be a point where your seven classrooms, 20 of them could be school choice. You're only getting $5,000 from those seats, whereas it's $18,500 for kids who live here. There's a point where it actually doesn't save us money, and it won't make sense, and I'm trying to get some information about like, how would we know when that's happening?
But I'm gonna say one more time, you have $800,000 of operational costs in school choice right now, so.
And I work in a place that did the same exact thing.
Right.
And they are hitting the point where.
No, no, I'm just saying.
Cost of the additional employees now needed in those classrooms.
But you gotta, we have to keep, keep aside that if you take that money away from school choice, where are you getting it from?
I, I absolutely understand.
I think seeing a chart about the school choice would let us know what grade levels that maybe, like, will be more strategic in the numbers that we open up. I mean, it's probably something to think about anyway, but.
And the lower level, the more you open at K one, two, you're gonna fill automatically. When you open at J-Bish in the high school, you don't fill them as much.
I mean, my thought, where I was going with this was like, where are school choice numbers running here? Because now that we're closing the building, and we'll be able to see what our class sizes are next year, or everything but kindergarten, right? Like, kindergarten is.
Kindergarten's a little bit of a wild.
It's a guess, but it's a guess. But everything else will have a good idea, we can know, like, hey, we can do two school choice seats, or, you know what, we need to stick to the zero because we already have five class sizes. So, that's kind of where my thought is going.
And part of that equation though is, if you look at K, it's shrinking every year. We can't count on 113 and 7, 8, 9, 10, it's gonna be smaller just because of what's happening in the population in general. There's gonna be a point where, where I have to figure out, hopefully strategically, how do you shrink staff, maybe with retirements? So that we have the right number of classes for the total number of kids that we have.
Oh, that's not wrong, I just feel like, I'm just looking at next year, I'm not looking at.
Right, so I think there are two things we can do. One is, I can try and get a similar chart that is sort of, Belchtown residents only, that could be informative. But two is if we advance to the next slide, using the new numbers that we have from October 1st, I did work out class sizes for next year. Since I think that's probably the metric that. I think that's probably the metric that will most inform, well, one of the metrics that will inform your approaches for school choice, the other being, is it cost-effective? Is, is the money we take in greater than, you know, we spend on each of these students, educating each of these students? That's, that's a key question that is difficult to get at. But, this is, is the same chart that you saw in July with new numbers based on new information. It gives you projections with seven home rooms, projections with six home rooms, so you can see how these new numbers change. Any of, yes, 70 something students fewer, several for grade level. It's not a C change, but it does, it does look a little different than it would, than it did at law.
It actually is great, it does, it's pretty helpful, I mean, the builder's getting closer to our new numbers.
Right.
Yeah, remember, fifth grade will really become sixth grade next year, so what we're gonna have to do at J-Bish is we're gonna have to look at the schedule, which we're working now. And we may have to add a special elective-type educator at J-Bish, so kids aren't studying all the time. So, we talked about that, so we'll have to see how that plays. But that 27 is really going to J-Bish next year.
So, that's actually sixth grade.
Yeah, so that, that will be spread out among.
That's the one you're worried about is the seventh grade, right?
Correct, correct.
So, I think there's, this is both good and bad, because it's good that this is the size classes we want, this is the size that we think we can get real NCAS growth, this is that. But then also on the town side, like, oh, you've lost 77 kids, so you can lose X percentage of funding, and then we're back to where we started.
So, I think that's why we want to ring the bell on NCAS and VOCAL data and say, we're shrinking, but we need the staff in different places to make up for some real lost ground, and it, it is concerning.
Yeah, I mean, I think these two bits of information were great to note tonight. Any questions?
I think there's, just one more slide just to sum up again. Impacts, no, no, it's okay, impacts, I think it's something that you all were, were talking about anyhow. This lower enrollment, it reduces the space pressure as we reorganize into a fourth school district, which is great. It, it does increase budgetary pressures since school choice revenue will decline, you know, longer term. I'm sure that's something that you'll, you'll be debating, our approach to school choice. Keep the same, we need to off that funding source, who knows, there are lots of different options for you. But, but those are the, the most immediate implications of the school choice decline and enrollment decline.
That's the longest I've ever heard you speak, friend.
And I take a vow of silence now for the next month. I don't have to say anything.
Before you, before that happens, is there any questions? All right, thank you very much, I appreciate it. All right, curriculum and instruction is to be determined, personnel and policy is the 18th. Broadway and presentation was canceled tonight, and I saw a debate, I think, and finance and budget, and that happened tonight.
Yes, so we met to discuss some budget transfers, so in our meeting, we voted to send two budget transfers to the full committee for vote. Mark will tell them too.
Yeah, so we had some transfers, basically, there were two of them, and one of them was moving money from tuitions, budget money from tuitions to staffing. Because we changed the budget for the 240 grand. We originally had, when it was written, it was written the same as last year, which, which was offsets for salaries. And we took salaries out of the 240 grand because you end up taking that 90% MTF or MTRs for, for no good reason. So, to save the money for that, we did, well, adjusting up the budget, so the offsets will now be coming out of tuition and not salaries. So, the transfer is just to accommodate for that on the budget side of the house. And then the second transfer was $17,000 and change, and that was to take money to give to the, the software line. Because that, there was an initial expense for that for Raptor, which is software that kind of looks at your ID when you go into buildings, identifies you, to give you a visitor's password. If you have something pending with, with the courts, that you're not allowed to near people, that you can't get into that. Now, that money is, was transferred from the health insurance line because we were doing a little tweaking with health insurance since the enrollment period, and we got new numbers from the town in terms of our staff. So, we know that, that we have a little bit of enrollment there from what we initially budgeted after we sharpened our pencils. So, those are the two transfers that we're looking for from school.
So, in finance and budget, I made a motion to accept the two transfers and send them to the full committee, so I'll make a motion again to accept the two budget transfers.
And I'll second it. Any discussion? Oh, sorry. Oh, yeah, that's okay. Thanks. You're in charge now. All right, all of you, say hi.
So, that's a four, nothing. There you go.
All right. Wow. All right, healthy and safer schools, did y'all meet?
No.
You never do. You do, you do, you do, we just, no, 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 last meeting.
It was supposed to be today.
Oh, okay.
It was supposed to be today.
Collaborative?
We have not yet.
Okay. With that, is there any questions from the media?
Hearing none, pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21, Part 3, we're gonna enter into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation to the units A, B, C, D, and E. As conducting said business in open session would have a detrimental effect on the school committee's bargaining or litigation position, we will not be returning to open session. Jake, do you consent?
Yes.
Mika? Amy?
Yes.
Ruth?
Yes.
And I consent, so we are.
This conference is no longer being recorded.
7:29 and taking a vial break, and then convening for executive session next one.